My name is Anthony Buono. I live in downtown San Diego. I live in the Savina Building, and I've been a resident of downtown San Diego my whole, my whole adult life. I just, I'm here today to support the renewal of the P-Bid and express how important I think Clean and Safe is to the world that I live in day to day. It's very important for us and as a property owner and as a resident. I do have a few questions. I wasn't in the November meeting, but it might be something that the staff can answer in, in support of the, the renewal. The first was, been here a long time, never seen such a tragic amount of really homeless and, and difficulty on the streets in San Diego in my whole life, and I really admire what the Clean and Safe people are doing. I just wonder out loud, gosh, is it enough money? Do they have enough capital to do the job they're supposed to do? I really don't know the answer to that. I've asked the question, and I'm really not sure. It looks like around a $16 million budget a year. I wonder out loud with the onslaught that we've seen over the last five years and, and perhaps even more in the future, is it enough? Has anybody asked that question? Has anybody answered that question? Second is, I'm mindful, it's a 10-year contract. I, I live in the private sector. I don't live in the public sector. Never seen a 10-year contract in my life like this. Just want to be sure there's accountability in the contract. I don't know how that occurs, but the council might have a better answer than I would. And then third is, I'm mindful that the Clean and Safe folks are working very hard every day, but I'm not sure the technology that exists in the Clean and Safe organization is all that good. And it might need a bigger investment in terms of technology to make them do their jobs better.
I have investment property in East Village, and what my concern is regarding this increase is, one, the 7% increase, I guess is that once for the entire 10-year, is that annually, that 7% increase for that 10-year period? And a meeting like this at 10:00 AM, I don't think it gives enough fairness for, you know, owners like myself who has a little bit more of leniency on scheduling. Second, the 3% increase of city admin costs, is that part of the 7%? If so, that's half of the 7% increase annually. It says here on page 16, that has to explain this whole increase, that the limit to the city's ability to recover the full cost of administration per state law. So that means it's not only 3%, but the actual full recovery. And three, baseline, it continues to reference baseline. What are the details of the baseline that it actually covers? And four, the page, page four, the cleaning and maintenance and safety and hospitality. I know my building. I sit on my HOA board, and I know the building, the entire streets around the building. We are either clean and safe, it's understaffed, or they don't have the right technology. But we have constant urine, feces, our own staff is having to clean up. And then we have debris. It says here debris, safety issues. We constantly, I feel like when I'm actually at my downtown condo, I'm in Gotham like in Batman, where Gotham City is downstairs because of the shrieks of the homelessness and...
Your time has concluded. Thank you for that concluding comment.
I will say that the city of San Diego is supplementing downtown cleaning by millions of dollars, the sanitation services. And perhaps they would have to spend less on that if they provided restrooms. And so there's some money that could be spent to avoid the cost of cleaning, avoid the sanitation and public health threats. And I would encourage the council to consider, is the Downtown Partnership Group, is this money going to prevent problems or simply managing problems without preventing them? I also noticed that there have been, and the community meetings make it possible for people to attend and participate, they, it looks like they're all held in the morning. And I don't know how many people are able to take time out of work to attend some of these meetings if they want to participate. So how open is the Downtown Partnership to having people fully participate? Most other community groups around San Diego meet in the evenings after work hours where people are, are more available to participate. Also, the, the meetings have shrunken their annual mixer. It used to be held in six different locations around the downtown area. In recent years, it looks like it's been consolidated into one annual mixer for people as opposed to six different communities being allowed to have questions asked and, and so I'm just saying that the outreach of this organization has constricted over the years, but their budget has increased. Their salaries have increased. So there's really no excuse for not making the public more engaged with what's happening with this. And I would ask the council to make that one of the requirements for this going forward. If you're going to give them more funding, make sure that the community that they're serving have more opportunities to attend meetings. Instead of one mixer, go back to the former model where you had six different community meetings spread out over different times in different places downtown. Thank you.
I agree with the previous comment that some of these are taking many years to address. And in reverse order, CS6, this is a case that's going back to 2019. And why would it take six years for the city to reach some type of an agreement with this? I think that you're dragging out the clock to the detriment of the claimant and their family members and others. So I really encourage the city, having been through this with a friend who had a trip and fall case against the city, I know how they, you tend to operate. It's, you have all the resources in the world to avoid settlement and payments with plaintiffs. And in cases of personal injury, I encourage you to do better. Likewise, I hope that the city will learn on CS3, what happened to the family, or what happened to this young man who drowned at the age of 19, just a short time after graduating high school. I hope the city will learn from this, settle appropriately with the family, but most importantly, prevent future tragedies and deaths from happening at our beaches. Regarding CS2, 101 Ash Street, please choose the proposal that offers the most family housing downtown so that we can get more mixed use and more families able to live in the downtown area. We talk about density. So many of our, our homes and other parts of San Diego are being converted into short-term vacation rentals. They're displacing families. The costs are going up. And that ties in with the case involving the housing HUD. I'm trying to scroll through and find that one. When you increase density, you also increase housing prices. If you look at neighborhoods, and I'm referring now, and I can't find the case number, if, if you increase density, you're adding value to the land because you could put more housing on it. So what we are seeing is people splitting up their lots and building more, and as a result, CS5, that's what I was looking for. If you're increasing density in certain neighborhoods, that will incentivize building more homes on it, which sounds wonderful, but those homes are not becoming more affordable because the land is more valuable and people are investing more and they want to return on their investment. Also, it's increasing more vehicle miles traveled in these neighborhoods. And there have been two deaths of pedestrians within a few blocks of my home in Claremont within the last few weeks. So as we see more people added to communities, this is again referring to CS5, if we're increasing density throughout the city, we have to also increase the services. We have to take a look at the traffic flows, and we have to take into account that adding density adds value to land, and that increases the costs and our property, the homeowners will not benefit, or the property owners will, but renters and others will not.
My apologies. Your time has concluded. Thank you for those comments. And that concludes public comment on the closed session items.
Yes, good afternoon. George Duarte, President, San Diego City Firefighters Local 145. As you well know, much of the impact here in terms of San Diego city parking downtown really affects public safety, that being firefighters. You also know that on weekends, special events, evenings, we have a mobile operation detail, which is paramedics that go out and serve these areas. This is disproportionate. We don't do this in other communities. And so if these parking fees could go to support those specialized endeavors, that would be very helpful for fire rescue and the men and women of Local 145. Thank you.
...benefit our communities. Thank you.
All right, Tangilo, this is your second warning. You continue to disrupt the meeting. You know the protocols.
That group is key league downtown derby. Sit down.
All right, this is your final warning. Your conduct is violating state law and the rules of council. And if you continue with this, I'm going to ask you to leave the council. Okay, I've given the third and final warning. Tangilo, you forced me into this. You know what the rules are. I'm sorry to do this, but please leave the chambers.
Like I told you, just continue.
Okay, one more out, one, one more out first. Okay.
Brian Clark.
Hello, council. My name is Brian Clark. I'm a steward of the Teamsters Local 911, representing the San Diego lifeguards. So I'm here to support the fee increase for the parking. It's a great avenue to increase revenue for the city. At the beach, we see the numerous tourists, tens of thousands of people in the summertime coming along our coastline who, you know, have free parking down there. And so I think parking is a, is a good, increasing the parking fee is a good option to, to generate more revenue for the beach, or for the, for the city of San Diego. At the beach, we, we often have people come up to us and ask us like, where do I pay for parking? I don't, I don't see the meters or anything. A lot of people expect that they have to pay for parking, and there are a lot of visitors are shocked that they don't actually have to pay for parking down along the coastline. So I think this proposal is, is good, a good direction that we're going in. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Timothy Douglas.
Council President, Members of the Council, my name is Michael Zuchet, representing San Diego Municipal Employees Association. We're grateful for the IBA and the work that his office has done on this. Grateful for your leadership on this. We strongly support this recommendation. If you read, as I know you have, the IBA's benchmarking, which shows just the average of other cities in California being well above where you're even being recommended to go to today. If you just look at the Port of San Diego, which is already at $2.50, in fact, they went there in 2017, these are at meters that are literally across the street from your meters. So respectfully, I think the question is not, should we do this today, but why didn't we do this 10 years ago? This is overdue. We also support the recommendation from the IBA. Parking districts are very important. And we do think the right approach is to keep the funding that is there, but essentially treat this almost like tax increment where the additional money goes to the general fund because the circumstances call for it. The deficit that this city faces is real. It's growing, and it's going to be solved primarily by two things, either raising revenue or cutting services. So every dollar of revenue that is not raised is going to be felt on the, the service side. And so obviously, we think especially given the benchmarking, why wouldn't we take this opportunity? And finally, we appreciate your work, the IBA's work, and the work of the mayor's office who is working on other, more comprehensive things. We of course support that and look forward to those recommendations. And to the IBA's point earlier, we have to take this opportunity now. There's not too many things at City Hall that can be implemented in 24 hours. And so this is a significant one that needs to be implemented as soon as possible. We appreciate your support of that today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Benjamin Nichols, and I'm the Executive Director of the Hillcrest Business Association. We represent 1,800 small businesses and commercial property owners in Hillcrest. Though that we're not enthusiastic about a meter rate increase, I am here to offer our support for this proposal, provided some minimum protections are made for those neighborhoods that do have parking meters. We request that the funds that have been allocated to the Community Parking District Program for FY25 be maintained and that same funding level be allocated for the program in FY26. We would also need and request that the Uptown Community Parking District and the Hillcrest Business Association be included in any discussion concerning revising City Council Policy 100-18. Community Parking District Program is very important and has funded many exciting projects, improvements such as the Normal Street Promenade, which breaks ground on February 16th. Thanks for your time.
Good afternoon, Council President Locava and San Diego City Council members. I'm Sunny Lee, the Executive Director of Discover Pacific Beach, as well as the President of the San Diego Business Improvement District Alliance. I apologize that I couldn't make it in person today, but I'm speaking in favor of the proposed parking meter rate increase. I understand the city's budget challenges and believe this decision is one of many difficult choices ahead. I appreciate that the community parking districts were considered in this plan and hope that similar consideration will continue for fiscal year 2026. Pacific Beach is one of the newest community parking districts with meters, and I want to highlight the extensive community advocacy from our businesses and residents behind this change. The meters aim to improve parking turnover and demand in our business district. While we are at the start of our second year of operations, our district is eager to use parking revenue for impactful mobility projects, including expanding our PB pathways, a network of safe biking streets. I urge the council to continue prioritizing community-level efforts.
Your time has concluded. My apologies. If you have additional, additional comments, you can email them in.
For those who are speaking in opposition to this, thank you for showing up today on such short notice. There is a Cost of Living Committee that has been created to address issues like this. And why it wasn't put before that committee for review, I, it's hard to understand. San Diegans are struggling to live in this city with daily bills going up, yet no one had a chance to comment on this before you're taking it up to the full council. People have mentioned how visitors take away parking and pay the same rate as residents. They're also taking away housing in over 9,000 short-term vacation rentals. I really encourage you to have a hearing on this before you approve it. And it's very short-sighted to take in money because you can. You're encouraging more people to take transit, to drive less, and yet you're trying to raise the money on those that, for whatever reason, are not able to do so. And for those who are not banked, they won't be able to use these electronic parking meters.
Thank you. I'd just like to offer that please consider that increasing parking meter fees creates a, a burden for employees of businesses, community businesses. They are forced often to run out every two minutes and, and put more money in the meter unless they have their cars towed away. I'm not sure if you could create a, a parking lot that was specific for permitted staff that are working in the area, but I do think that they should be considered. Thank you for letting me speak.
If we do not take action, we are looking at cutting employees. And I think we owe it not only to our employees, but also to the public, in which they are the ones that provide the services that improve the quality of life of our residents. And to make sure that we are doing everything we can to address our structural deficit. This structural deficit did not happen yesterday. It has been discussed over a period of years, and we knew it was coming. And so the time is now to take action. The time is not to continue to sit back.
The last point I will make with, when we, when you all are working on that, I, I really, really do want to push as hard as possible that there is a heavy emphasis on non-residents paying the bulk of those fees. This city is a playground for folks from throughout this region and from throughout the country and even the world to a certain extent. And it is really important to me that San Diegans not be subsidizing the vacations of tourists who have the financial capability of, of coming here and enjoying this city. We heard it from our lifeguards. We've heard it time and time again. One of the number one questions that they ask from tourists is, where do I pay for parking? They're coming here, they're having their lives protected and saved by city lifeguards and paying nothing for that trip to the beach. There is no reason why we can't leverage that incredible resource to the benefit of the city and stop subsidizing those, the vacations of tourists.
I have to be honest, I'm very torn on this proposal. I absolutely understand the need for greater revenue so we could balance our budget. However, when we raise parking rates, we're impacting everybody in our communities regardless of income. Someone who makes an above-average income will likely not be burdened by the increased cost. However, the fact of the matter is that many of my constituents will not be able to afford to pay parking rates that have been doubled. With this proposal, we're telling people in District 8 that when they plan to take a trip to downtown or Pacific Beach with their family, that we now expect them to pay twice as much to park their car. That alone could make them rethink that trip and simply stay home. So for that matter, it pains me, but I just cannot justify raising these rates. Again, I do appreciate the effort by my council and the IBA to identify new revenue, but I won't be able to support the motion on the floor. Thank you.
I'm sorry, the voting system, please cast your vote. That passes eight to one with Councilmember Moreno voting no.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Clerk, please introduce item 201.
Thank you. Until a few days ago, the city's redevelopment website said that there wouldn't be an update until September. So I'm confused why this is basically was not advised to the public at large. And I have said it before, and I'll continue to say it, this is a pay-to-play project. When I tried to figure out how much money the city has received in exchange for this city land, instead I received how much hundreds of thousands have gone into various political committees to support building on this land. But the city itself has yet to receive any actual dollar value that I can see. And in an article over the weekend, Rachel Lang was quoted as saying, "We're not in the business of giving away city land" when it would have to do with a Ritz-Carlton redevelopment project for affordable housing. But it appears to me that's exactly what's going on here. The only difference is, the land has been given to people that are putting money back into political campaigns. That's pay-to-play, and that's what's going on.
Thank you, City Clerk, for your case. Joyce, in your other District 3. Director Bibler, thank you so much for all your work. I have a request to, to consider. Ever since I've read the book, Housing the Nation, affordable is unexplainable at this point. And it's strictly a bunch of metrics, and we really don't know what affordable is, and the metrics are not good. So 80% AMI or lower, what is that? What buildings, how many buildings are there going to be to house these 2,000 units? When will those buildings be built? How many need to financial, need for those buildings? What about tax credits? I would like an update just on the affordable housing section. I think the city deserves that. The public deserves that. We need an update on the 2,000 units.
Your time has concluded.
Please consider that.
I'm sorry, your time has concluded. Next is Henry Preciado, if you can please unmute.
...to pay these higher and higher taxes. So we're talking about the sports arena project, which now we're calling Midway Rising or something or another, another 101 ASH, another real estate deal that is, Lori Sodana said, has the stink of pay-to-play. I hope the council persons all declare that they receive no campaign contributions from any PAC that Midway Rising is participating in. The question really becomes, the city's been fooling with this for a long time. It's been on the agenda. Now we're talking about a Secunipa document. Who's paying for that? Is that coming out of the city budget? Who's, did they put a deposit down that paid for the time we're spending right now and docketing? You know, and finally, we're going to get an appraisal soon? Come on.
Your time has concluded. Next speaker is Eric.
I'm the President of La Jolla Village Residents Association and have been involved in this organization, which is a nonprofit 501(c)(4) since the early 2000s. And I just want to speak to a couple of things. One is the attitude that some people seem to have, that if someone in La Jolla wants to hold the line for why La Jolla is the beautiful place that it is, they must be wealthy and want to keep out other people. That couldn't be further from the truth. I happen to have been born in La Jolla and raised in La Jolla. I was actually born at the old Scripps Hospital on Prospect Street. And my family had five children, and all of our godparents had between five and 14 children, and they all lived in La Jolla. And we were far from wealthy. We were actually quite poor. And my parents were quite poor when we were growing up and when we, when they first moved there. I think La Jolla is precious. It is part of my soul, which I think a lot of us will say about the, the geographical connection to the place that we're from. I have many, many friends there. I went to La Jolla Elementary School in Maryland, La Jolla High School. The connections and the memories are rife. We actually used to live on Beaumont when I was three years old. I've actually lived all over La Jolla. My older brother, Steve Haskins, was a member of the town council for decades and in fact was the youngest member of La Jolla Town Council. He got involved over helping save some canyons when he was in high school. So we are not a bunch of rich people that are, the people that are actually doing volunteer work on this are not a bunch of rich NIMBYs who want to keep other people out. I am somebody that cares about La Jolla, yes, but also the reason La Jolla is so beautiful is because of all the work of people for so many years to keep it that way, to maintain the land use regulations, to hold the line, to try to make sure that the city council didn't let the line go too far. And that's the very reason that the developers want to put their luxury condo development here. If it were not for all the money and volunteer hours that were put into the Bird Rock redevelopment, would they be here? Maybe, maybe not. But the reason La Jolla is the way that it is, is because people have cared. And this is the case all over San Diego in coastal zones, from Pacific Beach to Mission Beach, to South Mission to downtown. People all over the city, and it's not usually the wealthy people, are volunteering to help keep San Diego, keep the great things about San Diego intact. And that's what this is about. This area was not improved, this block was not improved to be...
Your time has concluded.
So that developers could put residences here. It was improved for commercial.
Ma'am, can you hear me? Your time has concluded for the opponent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm here to provide a very brief explanation of why you should reverse the Planning Commission's decision. I submitted a complete explanation electronically. I'm going to start with my concluding comment and then work backwards. Other Bird Rock developments have resulted in local job creation, economic growth, and needed housing in a desirable location. They did that while complying with development standards intended to maintain the Bird Rock Commercial District. I hope you agree that is not too much to expect and require from this and future developments in Bird Rock. The, neither the city nor development, developer have actually, adequately demonstrated the following, is entitled to the requested incentives and waivers. It does not require additional incentives and waivers, and it meets the city's comparable, comparability requirement for the designated affordable dwelling unit. The proposed 23-story development on Turquoise Street has demonstrated emphatically that to rent the unnecessary and inappropriate approval of a development that would impose costs that are far, that far exceed the benefits from the increased affordable housing, it is necessary to review carefully whether a development is entitled to each requested incentive and waiver. Staff told you that the waivers are required for this development. The law is that they are, that in the absence of waivers, the project would be physically precluded, not economically.
Thank you for that concluding comment.
That has not been demonstrated by the developer or the city. Thank you.
Thank you for that concluding comment. We, first of all, want to appreciate staff's diligence on this project. They worked very hard getting us to Planning Commission, and they've worked very hard responding to the appeal issues that were raised on the record and this morning or this afternoon by Attorney Hamilton. I want to be very clear that none of the requested waivers and incentives are contrary to the Coastal Act. You're going to hear from my partner, Tim Hutter, in a second, who is an expert on the density bonus law. But I just want to mention a comment that was raised in a few of the appeals. The PDO is not somehow exempt from the Coastal Act because of the language of the municipal code that says it is, it takes precedence over the rest of the municipal code. Your provision of that municipal code doesn't somehow throw out density bonus law. That's different. Density bonus law in the Coastal Act are supposed to be harmonized, and that's being done magnificently, I think, in this project. There was a case mentioned by the appellant briefly on the slides that they provided today. There was a case mentioned by the appellant briefly on the slides that they provided today. Citizens for South Bay Coastal Actus versus City of San Diego. That's a hotel conversion to a homeless transitional housing. It was a project that came before a council a couple of years ago. Neighbors opposed that transitional housing for homeless folks, and the trial court ruled in favor of the opponents. Our local appellate court actually passed and decided something that helps the applicant and not the appellant, because the actual thrust of that case, when you look it up, says that the city has the authority to decide how to implement the Coastal Act and the state density bonus law on projects like this. I also want to point out quickly that the Coastal Commission has not said anything on this project, so they are not concerned. We really hope that you will deny this appeal and approve this project today. It is the best use of this site. Please just let the Murphys do what they do best and build necessary housing in this city.
Thank you for that concluding comment. Tim?
Hello, Council President Locava and the council. My name is Darcy Ashley, and I've been a resident in Bird Rock for 25 years, almost 26. And I'd like to talk with you today about why I am hoping that you will support the appeal. We have a really vibrant business, visitor-serving business community right now of about 100 businesses. And I put some handouts here that show a project that I worked on, where I went around to look at what was happening with all the businesses on the street. And you can look at that at your own leisure. But one of the things that I was struck at is how much new development, how many businesses have renovated their shops, putting significant amounts of money into it. So it's a really vital area. I would make the case for the fact that we can use more, more commercial development there. We are not looking to try to reduce it. In fact, I was not able to locate one move-in-ready retail vacancy. They're all booked up, or they're under construction, or they're for sale, or some other thing. And again, you can look at this paper and you can get more information yourself. I'd also like to highlight for you the fact that there is literally no residential at the street level in the whole entire Zone 4 in Bird Rock in that PDO area right now. Not one. It's all businesses in some fashion. That's before the PDO, during the PDO, none. This would be the first time that the city is permitting residential on that particular area. And when you see Bird Rock today, you see the fundamentals of success based on significant infrastructure in the roundabouts, in the establishment of the MAD. And just to conclude, I'd like to just say, I'd like to invite you all to come to Bird Rock and see all the great new changes that are happening.
Thank you for that concluding comment. I will start the five-minute timer and...
You know, for other items on the council agenda that affected the cost of living for the rest of us, we get one minute. But here we are on a La Jolla community item, and I get two minutes. How does that make any sense? You know, the first... And the other thing I want to say is, what good news? I now found out that on my house lot in City Heights, I can put 13 units and a commercial unit. Oh gee, that's... I guess I got something where I could get a retirement fund. Now, the main comment I want to make about... Oh, the third comment is, I didn't see any parking meters. Are there good... Is this going to increase parking or decrease parking? And how many of those 250-an-hour parking meters are going to be around this facility? Now, we're going to get into the final minute. You know, I've been watching council forever. And we spend so much time with what's going on in La Jolla. And again, we're spending all this time about an appeal of a one lot in La Jolla. It's a perfect demonstration of why La Jolla should separate from the city of San Diego and the San Diego Unified School District and conduct business and these issues independently amongst themselves as a community. Please support La Jolla governing itself, because the rest of us get little time before the city council on affordable living items, because we're using up all the time with La Jolla community local issues.
Thank you. Lori Soldanya, if you can please...
Yes, interesting point from the previous speaker. So I also was born at Scripps Hospital on Prospect in La Jolla. I also have lived in Bird Rock. I don't currently, but I did for 10 years before many of the development that you're reviewing now was in place. And we had numerous traffic accidents by high-speed cars traveling from Pacific Beach to La Jolla along the boulevard there before many of the improvements that you see presented to you today were put into place. And so I just want to acknowledge the importance of the traffic calming, the roundabouts, the other things that have taken place. And the comments that are being made on this appeal uphold that. There is a reason for the consistency in having commercial and retail on one level, residential set up above. And one reason is to encourage people to drive more carefully, to slow down, and prevent the deaths that happened all too often during the 10 years that I was living just two blocks up from the boulevard in the Bird Rock area near Colima and Bird Rock Elementary School. So I want to also just acknowledge the good work of the planning group. Bird Rock has improved tremendously over this time, from when I was living there to today. And it is because of the volunteers working on this. And I want to say one other thing. I do read documents very carefully online, Mr. Locava. You previously made a comment about not reading websites. I have sent to your office a correction that I hope you will take a look at. When I was reading a city document, there was a typo in that document. And so it was not my mistake. It was the city's Economic Development Department that made a mistake in their documents on this. So for everyone who's testifying and taking time to read this, thank you for your work participating today.
Hello, my name is Mason Muendo, and I am here on behalf of People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, or PETA, and our more than 6,000 members and supporters throughout San Diego to urge you to reject the proposed settlement that would allow SeaWorld to keep millions owed to San Diego taxpayers like myself. SeaWorld is a billion-dollar company that owes more than $12 million to the city in rent, late fees, and more. And rather than hold it accountable, the city is proposing that it let the abusement park off the hook for more than $3 million and go so far as to actually help prop up the company by handing it free advertising and an influx of visitors with SeaWorld admission coupons. SeaWorld continues to confine orcas like Corky to tiny concrete tanks where they have nothing to do but swim in endless circles. And it still uses dolphins and whales as breeding machines to create generations of animals forced to endure lifetimes of misery. Until SeaWorld ends its cruel breeding program and releases these intelligent, complex animals to seaside sanctuaries, the city has no business providing it with free marketing. I urge you to reject the settlement, which is a raw deal for both animals and taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Regina.
My name is Regina. And Mayor Gloria recently brained a severe budget deficit for what he anticipates will be a difficult upcoming budget process and painful cuts, including hiring freezes and halting the Civic Center revitalization project. As a San Diego resident, I hope you will choose not to forfeit the millions of dollars owed to the city in exchange for SeaWorld's admission coupons. Thank you.
I'm Valerie Tryina, and I am in your district, Henry Foster. And I've been there for 10 years. As a settlement disposition conference looms for SeaWorld's overdue rent, I urge the city council to rub your eyes and see this lesssee for the difficult tenant it's been. San Diego has been patient with this slacker tenant, but as a taxpayer who supports our city and who speaks for the millions of other taxpayers, I say enough is enough. SeaWorld is a serial abuser and killer of orcas and dolphins. We need to stop pretending that SeaWorld is just another business that brings in tax revenue. When we all come to the end of our lives in the privacy of our homes with those who care for us, our epiphany is that our actions out in the world speak volumes about our character and our legacy. If we are surrounded by loving, compassionate people, it means we lived an ethical and meaningful life. City council members, the decisions you make today will determine how you'll be remembered. Contemplate the emotional and physical suffering of intelligent, sentient orcas and dolphins penned in tiny tanks, ripped away from their pods, from their sons and daughters, performing to survive. Imagine that you were under house arrest forever. Do not renew SeaWorld's lease. Do what's right so you'll face the end of your lives knowing you did everything possible to leave the world a kinder place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary.
Yes, thank you. I just want to remind people who are listening about a term called astroturfing. It's the deceptive practice of presenting a public relations campaign in the guise of unsolicited comments from members of the public. And it describes people who show up representing corporations and speak against the interests of San Diego residents struggling to pay their utility bills while being charged the highest utility rates in the country, just for an example. I also want to comment about my lack of representation last year by my city council member who, I believe, left the meeting before conducting business is finalized. Jen Campbell missed months of council meetings and never informed her constituents of her whereabouts for the first couple of months. We had no council representation during that time. And her committee, Neighborhood and Community Services, hasn't met since July. And now she's returned, but she's seen leaving meetings early and ignoring public comments. And she actually had the questionable judgment to refer to a person who spoke earlier today as a QAnon member. So I just want to say respectfully, if there is a problem with how people are presenting things, there are ways to address that without resulting to casting aspersions on someone and using terms that people might find offensive. Likewise, Council President, if there's an error in something that I say and I do the research and find out it was resulting from a typo in a city document, I would appreciate an apology from you. I do know how to read documents. I do know how to read websites. And if there's a typo in a city document, then it shouldn't be cause for insulting a person who quoted an incorrect city document. So as a District Two constituent, I would very much appreciate having my representative there for the entire meeting and voting on everything before the council during your business time. Thank you.
I'm going to get to the structural budget deficit in the second half. I hadn't planned on doing this. But Mr. Stump, I've got to say this to you. On the water rates that are going up, did you know that when we conserved our water, I have been conserving for years, did you know that because I conserve my water, and if you did it because of you, you caused the water rates to go up? Is that perverse or what? That word was used at city council at the last hearing meeting on the water rates going up. That is a very, very sad... I still have a sadness that lingers in regards to our water rates going up and the truth of the matter. So just wanted to put that out there for you. So Chair of the VG&E Committee, Henry Foster III, and also a council member, thank you for talking about the structural budget deficit. I have been chirping about the structural budget deficit probably for 15 or more years. And I want the public to know that this is not a budget deficit. We have a budget deficit that's $258 million or more. This is called a structural budget deficit. It's much deeper. It's been ongoing for, I think, over, at least over 20 years. So Chair Foster III, please go and look at all the materials from the IBA. Please look at everything that has transpired so that we can finally address this. And with the KPF, KPI.
Your time has concluded. Join my apologies.